We are. Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Tuesday, August 16th, regular school board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission statement is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Marotti.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson, can you call the roll? Present. Matheson is expected. Mr. Dorn.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Ms. Marotti.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And Mrs. Luke is expected. Colonel Alvarado is also expected and Colonel Siri should be expected by Zoom. We have a quorum. Thank you. Our first item is staff introductions. Our goal and objective is workforce and organizational excellence to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so that they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Staff new to the district or new to their position will be introduced. Ms. Maline.
Yes, we'll begin staff introductions with me introducing our new board secretary, Carm Richardson. Welcome, Ms. Richardson. She is a lifelong Fairbanksian, her and her husband both attended public schools here in Fairbanks and graduated from Lathrop High School. They have two children and four grandchildren that reside in Fairbanks full-time or part-time. Previously to coming to serve the board, Ms. Richardson served as the Lathrop High School Administrative Secretary for 16 years. In her spare time, which she had before coming to this job, in her spare time, she enjoys biking, hiking, walking, running, kayaking, tennis, cross-country skiing, baking, and of course, spending time with her kids and grandkids. So welcome, Carm. Next, I'd like Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante to introduce people that are new to her area.
I'd like to introduce two folks who are new to the positions, one new to our district. Chris Heineman. It's my pleasure to introduce Chris Heineman as our new Director of Nursing Services. Chris and his wife Larissa moved to Fairbanks from Duluth, Minnesota in January 2020, just in time to hunker down for the next two years with his son Colton, who was three years old at the time. Prior to moving to Fairbanks, Chris had extensive nursing experience, including at a busy ICU, a large hospital emergency room, and an emergency room nursing coordinator supervisor. Chris also has an outdoor skill set and has spent many years as a rafting and Arctic camping guide. We are grateful that his sense of adventure and appreciation for our climate has brought Chris and his family to Fairbanks, and I want to give a shout out to his son Colton, who will have his first day of kindergarten tomorrow. Yeah, new kindergartner too, right? So welcome and congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
And to Kate Hall, welcome to Kate Hall as our Executive Director of Special Education. I'd like to officially welcome her into this position. She is already well-known in our district, having worked here in special education since 1999. Kate has been a speech-language pathologist in numerous schools, working with students from pre-K to post-secondary age. Prior to her position as Executive Director, Kate served as our Assistant Director of the Special Education Department for the last three years, so she knew a little bit of what she was walking into. When not at work, you might find Kate and her family fishing in Valdez, and I am very pleased that Kate is continuing to serve our district, and I hope that from time to time, I can help her make room in her freezer. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Andy DeGraw to come and introduce the folks in his area.
Thank you, Ms. Maline. I'd like to introduce Johnny Owen, who is our new Chief Information and Technology Officer. Just started a couple weeks back, and it's Johnny. I hear if you call him John, your computer systems will all crash instantaneously, so it's Johnny. He comes to us by way of Lockheed Martin, was a project engineering manager out there at Ileson, working for Lockheed Martin, and did a number of different tasks with them. Prior to that, he held a number of different roles with the Buckeye Union High School District, High School District in Arizona, so he does have school experience. And he has a Bachelor's of Science in Information Technology, has worked in the military, general industry, and education supporting database, network, security, and systems administration. So in his spare, this is rumor, he can confirm or deny this, but in his spare, he must like to commute to work because when he worked at Ileson, he lived in Fairbanks, and then when he got a job at Fairbanks, he moved out to North Pole. So commuting is a pastime. So join me in welcoming Johnny Owen to our school district.
Next on the agenda, we have our Ileson Air Force Base Board Representative Introduction. Goals and objectives to create an environment that supports the strength and needs of staff so that they create a safe climate where students thrive. The school board would like to welcome Colonel Antonio Alvarado, Commander of the 354th Mission Support Group C, Ileson Air Force Base, and Ileson Air Force School Board Representative, replacing Colonel Stuart Williamson. And Colonel has joined us here on the dais.
Thank you very much. Good to see you guys. I promise you, we do value timeliness. I apologize for being late, still learning the roads. Very happy to be here. Hopefully, I will be in the job for two years, sort of thing I can do to help out. I am more than happy to do that, and again, thank you for having me.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Core value: Student centered. Center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the chief school administrator or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If any item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Thank you. The motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, may we have the roll call? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Oh, it's just yes or no.
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Ms. Richardson, may we have a reading of the consent agenda items?
I'll do that for Ms. Richardson.
Thank you.
The board has accepted the grant award in the amount of $1,000 for the Alaska Save Children's Act grant from the Alaska Department of Education Early Development, per fiscal note 2022-54. The board has approved Ben Ileson Junior Senior High School request to fundraise approximately $3,000 by hosting a donated date fundraiser to support the school's football program. The board has approved travel requests for Lathrop High School to send five cross-country runners and one chaperone to Portland, Oregon, October 13th through the 16th, 2022, to compete in the Lewis and Clark Cross Country Invitational at no cost to the district, and if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. And to Lathrop High School to send the Lathrop Girls' Basketball Team and two chaperones to Las Vegas, Nevada, from December 27th, 2022, to January 1, 2023, to compete in the Gator Winter Classic Tournament at no cost to the district, and if any local, state, or federal travel health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. The board has approved Lathrop High School's request for its music department to raise approximately $120,000 to send approximately 30 students and chaperones to Disney World in Orlando, Florida, March 11 through 19, 2023, to engage and work with other music organizations outside of Alaska at no cost to the district, and if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. The board has accepted the donation of 20 microscopes with kits valued at $6,000 from the University of Alaska Fairbanks Department of Chemistry and Biochemistry to Fairbanks Best Homeschool to assist students in their coursework. $1,000 from Foster and Rogers LLC to Lathrop High School to support the school's football program. $1,160 from the Greater Fairbanks Chamber of Commerce to Lathrop High School to support the school's football program. $2,500 from Rental Services LLC to Lathrop High School to support the school's football program. $1,500 from the Northern Area Aquatics to North Pole High School to cover the school's 2022-2023 swims, season pool fees. $2,175.72 from Special Olympics Alaska Incorporated to North Pole High School to reimburse the travel expenses incurred for the school's participation in the 2122 state track competition. And $2,491.50 from the National Math and Science Initiative Incorporated to North Pole High School to reimburse student fees associated with the school's Advanced Placement Exam Program. The board has approved the monthly management reports from June 2022, pre-close, the Personnel Action Report for the period May 27th through August 5th, 2022, and the minutes from the March 23rd, 2022, June 6, 2022, June 27th, 2022. March 23rd, 2022, June 6th, 2022, June 27th, 2022, special meetings, and June 7th, 2022, regular meetings as submitted. The board has acknowledged the Personnel Information Report for the period May 27th through August 5th, 2022, the Budget Transfer Report for the period June 1 through June 30, 2022, the Long-Term Suspension and Expulsion Reports for the 2021-2022 school year as of June 30th, 2022, the board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Maline. Next, we have public comments. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items, including public comments, input, and suggestions are welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the Education Support Staff Association and the Fairbanks Education Association negotiations. Core value. Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and provide their city of residence for the public record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for the school board and chief administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately, as additional information may be needed to be gathered. Public comments, input, and ideas and suggestions are welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the Education Support Staff Association and the Fairbanks Education Association negotiations. There was no one signed up for prior testimony, and is there anyone in the room who would like to testify regarding items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. And we'll move on to our next agenda item, the Borough Assembly Report. Core value. Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Aaron Logeski, Borough Assembly Deputy Presiding Officer, will provide the assembly report. Welcome, Mr. Logeski.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. Do you hear the mic?
Is it green?
It's green. Okay. Your button works opposite of ours in the assembly chamber, I believe. So, I mean, everything's pretty normal in the Borough Assembly, but there are a couple of items coming up that are going to affect the school board. And just in general, I will let you guys know that in the last state budget cycle, they did reimburse us for a number of the unpaid school bond debt reimbursement. So at the time, I was on the assembly as that occurred. The assembly chose basically to increase the tax burden on the local taxpayer proportional to the loss of state support, and so all of that funding has gone back into our bond payment reserve. So presumably, that increased tax burden that we experienced at that time will result in future reduction in tax burden, as, you know, additional taxes won't need to be raised as high to cover those bond payments in the next two years, two, three years, or whatever it's going to turn out to be. But I do want to point out something that we have coming up at our next regular assembly meeting. Print it out here, let's make sure I got the right document. But it's going to go through a work session this coming Thursday, and then the Thursday after, we have ordinance number 202246. And I'm going to try to be as objective as I can. I do have an opinion on this, but because it's the assembly report, I'm going to try to stick to the facts. So, this, the title of the ordinance is called An Ordinance Amending Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title III Regarding City and School Board Member Participation in Borough Assembly Meetings. So currently, for the school board members, and for you guys, when you come over and join us, you have full rights to participate in assembly debate as if you were an assembly member. You also have the ability to give a report, like I'm giving right now. The city representatives, they have one additional power that you do not have with our current rule set. They actually can sponsor ordinances, which I don't think very many people know about. I know about, because sometimes I read the code in the middle of the night when I'm bored. So I'm not aware of that ever being used, but nonetheless, the proposal coming forward would change these substantially. For the cities, it would completely strip away the power to sponsor an ordinance for the reports for everybody. It would limit the reports to five minutes, unless extended by the presiding officer. And as far as debates, it would significantly curtail your ability to participate in debate at the assembly level, because in order to participate in debate, it would need to be ruled by the presiding officer that the issue at hand is directly related to your body, and your body would have to take official action prior to that meeting. And so, as you guys are well aware with, like, Open Meetings Act, and, well, that's not actually, that's the wrong one I'm thinking of here, but in terms of public notice for meetings, it may or may not be feasible for you to come up with an official position without a special meeting prior to an assembly meeting, unless potentially you're watching our agenda like a hawk as it comes out. And I don't know how many may be doing that. I sometimes don't know how many assembly members are doing that, you know, right on the dot, certainly before the meetings. So anyway, just wanted to let you know about that that's coming up. If you wanted to, you know, I think you've got a school board member who may come and express an opinion on it, but that's coming up. Now, I've got something that I'm working on personally, I wanted to share with you, and it is technically still in draft phase, and I have sent a copy of it over to your chief administer, your CEO, and your controller for transportation. It involves school busing, so this is a personal thing. And so, we have a amount of ARPA money that we're still sitting on at the Borough Assembly. And of course, we want to expend this before it expires in, I don't know, two or three years, otherwise it lapses back to the federal government. We want to keep it in our hands locally. And so, I do have a proposal to spend $945,000 of that, and that proposal would be to offer a sort of premium pay to bus drivers. It would start next year, and it would be for 1250 per school district quarter, you know, Q3 and Q4 of the current school district, and then Q1 and 2 of the next school year. So, just want to let you know that's coming, and if the school board ever decides to come up with an opinion or the administration, feel free to work with me. It's still, like, that's the most current draft. I'm intending on pushing it forward in that phase, but if you find something that needs to be changed, or that can make it work better, I'm very open and willing to work with the district.
Thank you. Any board member questions? Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, Assemblymember Logeski. Can you tell me who sponsored the amendment to the code that you referenced?
The change, the proposed change to the representatives, the rules there is sponsored by Assemblymember Wilson.
I have one more question, do you mind if I ask? Thank you. What's the timeline for your resolution for the $935,000 for premium pay to bus drivers?
So, its current stage is I've pushed it forward to something called the FOG group, which is the Financial Ordinance Group. And I'm not that familiar with it, but it is something we have to do. It has to go through there and get blessed off before it goes forward into regular agenda setting. And I'm not familiar with it, because I don't like to spend money very much. This is the first time I've experienced going through that group in my five years on the assembly. I'm not very spendy, but, which tells you what I think about the ordinance. But at any rate, it's going through there, and assuming they bless it off, and it should have smooth sailing, it'll be up for public introduction on September 8th, which would mean a week later, it would go to the Finance Committee, and then a week later, it'd be up for public hearing. But that's tentative. None of that is set in stone.
May I follow up?
Thank you. We're just getting limited to questions before we go on to another person. We have Mr. Doran.
Thank you, Mr. Logeski, for being here tonight, and to the Borough Assembly for continuing to have a representative here. Regarding the ordinance on the school board representatives, recognizing you may not be able to answer it, but if I read the ordinance, and I read it the other day, if during debate or in discussion by the assembly members, if it was a school matter, and the representative had some information that would add to that, what would be your understanding at this point? Would we be able to be recognized to offer some information? Sometimes it's clarification, sometimes it's straight information that may be pertinent to the school topic that you're discussing?
So, I'll ask that question during the work session, or, yes, I'm just thinking I'm presiding over the work session. I think I can still ask it while I'm presiding over. But nonetheless, so that'll be on Thursday. I'll ask the attorney that, and I have not. My reading of it is that you could not participate. So, I mean, there's of course ways to sort of allow it to happen. Whoever's running the meeting could call a recess. Someone could go over and talk to you, and then they go share it with the assembly outside of the recess. Or an assembly member could move to suspend the rules to allow you to participate in the meeting. That would take a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules to allow that.
And if I might, the other one related to that is, and I appreciate the recognition that when we're there, there may be a topic that has come up, and since you're, the second and fourth Thursday, or, so you're, one could say you're after our meetings where first and third Tuesdays, something could go on the agenda for the assembly that would preclude time-wise, or be able to take a board position, and if I understand that correctly.
We would have to sit down and calculate the exact dates and see how much public notice was required, but I could see that very reasonably being possible. And, you know, one mechanism around that would be to call a special meeting. I don't know how often you guys all want to come in on short notice for a special meeting, and I don't know what your rules are to call them. I know what ours are. You need three assembly members to do it, or the presiding officer, and then you have to have, right, certain amount of public notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Ms. Marotti already asked my question.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti, did you have another question?
Yeah. Is there going to be intent followed behind the premium pay, or is it just straight contractual increase in salary?
Well, I can tell you the intent since I am authoring it. You know, I studied economics, and I know that if you offer, if there's higher pay, all else being equal, you'll tend to get more people who are interested in working that job than before. It's just, it's like gravity, right? It's a lot of economics. Now, how well it works, that's called elasticity of demand, but without going into any more economics, that's simply the intent is to help recruit additional bus drivers and help retain the ones that we have, so that we can hopefully get to a full busing service. However, it's only for one calendar year, and what happens after that, you know, this isn't going to affect it, not directly.
May I follow up?
Mr. Sampson has not spoken yet, so I'd like to let him speak.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to ask you to do a little follow-up with your intent concerning the ARPA funds that you were looking to utilize to send over to the district, or at least to Durham, however that's going to work out. I also wanted to mention, just a tit-for-tat, as to your ability to make motions and speak to issues before us today. I see that you're limited. Your participation on this board is limited, and it seems like we have a little more leeway over on the other side of the aisle, not to say that we utilize that. I don't think I've ever really seen it utilized to any extent, but that's just something to consider when that ordinance comes up.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti, did you want to still do your follow-up?
Yes, please. So to clarify what I was saying previously, and what you said about how it'll increase the pay for one year, so then to clarify, after that one year, then Durham will go back to the original pay, because they won't have the pay premium?
So, the way this is being structured is one, I've made it as easy as possible, as myself and the borough attorney could come up with to administer from the boroughs, then, because they are rather short-staffed, and any additional program is very stressful to them. And I mean that almost in like a very literal way, stressing the whole system, on top of being individually stressful. So, the way it'd work is there's three different thresholds, and of course, these can be adjusted, hourly thresholds. So if someone who works as an attendant or bus driver for Durham servicing the school district, if they meet that threshold, they'll get a check at the end of the quarter for that amount. The highest amount is $125. And I'd have to go back and check my notes, but it was based off of an assumption that in order to hit that, I think you'd had to work on average five hours per day that there was busing. But again, I'd have to go back and check my notes. So, the idea is it's kind of like a bonus, a quarterly completion bonus, and all I can tell you as a matter of fact is if it's passed as written, it will go away in a year. So if Durham might want to do something to replace that when it's gone, I suppose that is up to Durham. That's, you know, their sole discretion.
And just for clarity, it's going to Durham from the borough, not through the school district? It's not part of our contract with Durham. It's between the borough and Durham.
I've got the document in front of me. I'd almost need to go back and check with the attorney. I can tell you that the school district is involved, as written. So that's also why I've been reaching out to your administration to make sure we have everything in a row, so, you know, so that this will functionally work if approved.
I have yet to hear anything about this from our administration. Will this be included in your transportation presentation?
At this time, we are only directing our questions to the person who is testifying.
If I could answer a question, I think I heard. They just found out about this very recently. I think I sent the email only yesterday, so I don't think it's fair to assume they've had time to fully process this information.
Thank you, Mr. Logeski. Do any other board members? Mr. Doran?
Just clarifying the, or affirming the timeline. This Thursday is the work session on the city and board reps ordinance on that. So we can listen to that, the recording, or attend and listen in. And then it's before the assembly, projected before the assembly on the September 8th meeting, at which public testimony can be given.
So it should be, I forget my dates here, but whatever next, this coming Thursday is, is that the 18th, I think?
18th, right.
And so the 25th is the meeting that we should expect to see it come up for public hearing. And I believe the agenda was set today for that, and that particular agenda should be publicly noticed within, probably by the end of the week. The clerk's office does that.
Okay. And then action would be taken, could be taken that night?
Presumably, you know, usually when there's public hearing, there is action taken that night, although it could be postponed or whatever procedurally, but presumably, action may be considered on the week from Thursday, the 25th of August.
All right. Okay. So, thank you, because that helps, and the fact that we cannot take action as a board to respond to that prior to possible action. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to clarify that that timeline and that action is regarding our board members' role at the meeting, and that the September timeline was regarding the bus bonuses. It's when you first came, you said, you know, a timeline for that to be heard in October, I think. So there was a bunch of steps before that. Thank you, Mr. Logeski.
Thank you.
Our next item is our Chief School Administrator Report, including a transportation report by Durham School Services Representatives. Goal and objective: Ensure students, staff, and families in the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Chief School Administrator Karen Maline will provide her report, including a transportation report by Durham School Services Representatives. Ms. Maline?
Thank you. I'll have a few introductory remarks, and then I'll turn over the time to our partners, Durham, who are joining us via Zoom. First, I'd like to give a brief HUTCH update. The panel was repaired in Seattle, and once they completed the repair, it did work. It's on its way back here to Fairbanks. There were some... There were some transportation glitches, but it is on its way here. Once it gets here, then our folks, we found out, will be able to install it and work with GVEA, and then we'll be ready to turn it on and see if it works here. So that's where we are in that process, that the part is on its way. I'd like to recognize the Human Resources Department for their efforts, their tireless efforts to recruit, finding staff members, onboarding staff members. They held orientation for over 40 substitute teachers the past two weeks, all while conducting all of the necessary onboarding for new hires. So, great job, Human Resource Department. Teaching and Learning Department spent the summer doing training for students and teachers. They planned an outstanding professional development routine for our teachers, and in the meantime, they were moving and delivering curricular materials to the appropriate schools. So, great job, Teaching and Learning. Nutrition Services has continued to process applications for free and reduced lunch, getting ready for the new school year. And if families haven't already filled out the application for the free and reduced lunch, they can still do that. And I would also like to invite all of the attendees and folks here to join the administration with a little piece of cake back there honoring our Ms. Tuttles' last board meeting. Over 1,000 board meetings, how many? 1,068 board meetings. So help yourself to a piece of cake in honor of Ms. Tuttel. So I would also like to just, before I turn it over to Durham, say that we are ready tonight. A number of elementary schools are doing their back-to-school activities, and tomorrow morning, the first bell of the 22, 23 school year is going to ring, and students will come flooding into our schools, and we are ready for them. We are turning our focus this year to literacy, that gateway skill into all other learning, all other learning. So that's going to be a focus for this year. We've been teaching kids to read and write since 1904, and so this year, we're going to learn how to continue doing that and doing it a little better. So with that, I will turn it over to our Durham partners for their report, if we can bring them online.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for lending us this time to give a report to the board and to the school administrators. Very appreciative of the partnership thus far with Fairbanks School District. And so it looks like we are, for right now, we have 83 licensed drivers at our facility along with nine other spare drivers. We are working towards full staffing at this point, which we put a great deal of resources into, including sign-on bonuses of $5,000 for a licensed driver, $2,000 for an unlicensed fresh trainee, and $1,000 referral bonuses. We also offer, have moved our wages, starting wages, up to over $26 an hour from just over $23 an hour. And we have a renewed focus on our training pipeline and our operational, key operational points in the facility that have resulted in us, and over the last month to two months of increasing our pipeline to soon having 10 drivers projected and training by the end of the month. We continue to struggle a little bit with competition from the tourism industry, and those drivers delayed in returning to us, which we didn't foresee quite that, is a, we didn't foresee quite the impact that we thought we were going to see. So all in all, we're ready to start school tomorrow, operating 68 routes, and working with the local transportation team at the district to cover as much as we can, and also bringing in more vans. We have seven vans currently on site with another six that are going to be transported from the Lower 48 very, within the next couple of weeks, to get up there and hopefully alleviate some McKinney-Vento issues with McKinney-Vento children, and just lend some of those further out routes that don't necessitate an entire bus, that can be better used, more efficiently used locally. So that's the conclusion of the report as far as our operational readiness at this time, and open the floor to any questions that anybody may have for Durham.
Thank you so much. Ms. Mullin, did you have anything further before we turn to the board for questions?
No, I would like to just expand just briefly on the vans and getting the vans into full use. We won't be ready tomorrow to implement our van plan. We're still training the drivers and getting them ready, but as soon as possible, we will start utilizing those vans to, as our partner said, to address those students experiencing homelessness and their transportation, as well as alleviating some of the pressure on the current routes.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. I have Ms. Marotti.
Am I limited to two?
Yep.
Okay. As for HUTCH, I appreciate all the work getting the repair done. Do you have an ETA as to when it will be installed?
We don't yet, because it's not actually in Fairbanks yet. So it's en route, and once it gets here, and then we can set a timeline, but we don't have a time certain that it'll get here yet.
You don't, they haven't given you a time that it'll arrive in Fairbanks?
They did, and then they, I don't know how this happens, but they lost it, is what we were told. I don't know how you lose 500 pounds worth of a panel, but that's what we were told. So we are, and we just found that out today, I believe, that it was lost. So we are working with them to find out where it is and when it will get here. It was supposed to arrive today, and so then we were notified that it wasn't going to be here today. That's our delay in delivery. So we're working through that.
Who is "they"?
Yep. FedEx.
Okay. Is that my two, or can I ask another? Thank you. How many current positions are open, and how many subs are expected?
How many current positions in the, across the district are open? I don't have that number right now, because that number changes daily. Our Human Resources Department is onboarding people every day, so I don't have a solid number of, at this time in history, how many openings we have. We can get that to you, but it'll be a fluid number for the next, well, for a while.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin.
I'm sorry, through the Vice Chair, or Vice President?
Still the Chair.
Vice Chair?
Still the Chair.
Okay. Anyways, can I make a request then that the board receive the current vacancies and expected subs for the first day of school?
Ms. Mullin, we can do that?
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you'd give us a broad estimate. Are we 20, 50, approximately?
At this point, I believe most, I believe that our elementary schools are pretty well-staffed. In the high school, we have, we've had positions that we thought were filled, and they backed out. Over across the district, I can't give you that number specifically, but we are, we have filled most of our positions. Some of our sped positions remain open, which is not uncommon at all. But we continue to recruit, and we're getting new people all the time. We do have a few, I don't know how many exactly, classes that will be starting with subs. We have some of our ELP teachers that have been moved into classroom situations until we can get positions filled and move them back into ELP positions. So I'll just have to check with HR to find out exactly where we are for the first day of school. We do have a report that we give to the state, and I can make sure that the board gets that information as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I had Mr. Dorian.
Thank you. On this topic, I'm looking to get an idea, broad painting, we know it's fluid. Could you talk a little bit about how you've gone ahead with filling positions?
Sure.
Because I think it also speaks to our flexibility of staff who have said, yes, I'll go into a classroom waiting. I actually know somebody who was told tonight they don't need to do that, they can do the job they were hired to do. But talk a little bit about how you've gone to make sure every classroom is covered.
Thank you. Ms. Mullin, if I could, if the board intends to stay on the topic of the teachers, I was wondering if we could respect our online person and ask any questions we had regarding the bus, so that they could be dismissed from our meeting before we stay a long time on a different subject?
Yeah. That sounds great. This is, actually, if you want to think about that, and then I can, or do you want to switch now, or?
I would appreciate that, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Are you okay just waiting on that one?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. So then my question to Durham, and I'm sorry, I can't remember your name right offhand.
Will Zermans. Okay. I'm kind of new to the company, so it's nice to meet you.
Great. Thanks for being here. You talked about you have 83 drivers on now, nine spares. What I'm looking for is, do you, are some of the drivers on loan while we wait for your other drivers to come back?
That number does not include the on-loan drivers that we brought in. We've brought in an additional nine on-loan drivers from the Lower 48.
Okay. And as drivers return and new drivers come on, are we looking to be able to increase the routes?
Yes.
And sometime within maybe the next month or six weeks? You know, we, every year, we know we have drivers who are doing tourist and coming back, and so this is your second year with that. What's your projection for those people coming back mid-September?
Between mid-September and mid-October, we're expecting eight to 10 more to return from, that are currently either working construction jobs or tourism industry, that type of thing.
Can I just do a follow-up? So that eight to 10, would that replace the ones who are on loan and not really increase the number of drivers? Or that increase drivers?
Those by themselves will not increase drivers. Our training pipeline is going to be increasing the driver count. Those drivers that are on loan, those schools start at the beginning of September, so we should be able to replace those drivers with ones that are coming back, ones that are, we have some also that are pending, like medical clearance and things of that nature that are going to be clearing within the next couple of weeks. So we're projected to actually cover those nine drivers and then hook a little more on top of that by the beginning of September, and then the ones coming back from those other industries will be in addition to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Ms. Anderson, then Ms. Marotti?
Ms. Mullin, could you talk to me about the situation for HUTCH, for North Pole students who have HUTCH classes? Is one of the vans designated for, to deal with that, to provide it for those students? Or where are we on that issue?
No, there's no plan to use the vans in that capacity right now. As we develop our van plan, I don't, we don't have it extrapolated out that far yet, but there's no plan right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
I want to follow up on that suggestion. It was also on my list. So may I ask why we're not considering using the van plan for shuttles from the high schools to HUTCH?
So as I indicated in my communications, that HUTCH is the school of choice, just like our charter schools and other schools of choice. And transportation to schools of choice is only once we have provided transportation to all of our students that we can, that are attending their attendance area schools. So in the list of who gets transportation, charter schools and schools of choice are after everyone else has service.
May I follow up?
Directly regarding this issue? Yes.
Through the Chair, Vice Chair, could the board consider allowing the van usage, since it's not the bus route? It's a van, a temporary shuttle van situation?
I appreciate that suggestion, but that is an operational decision that's not really within the board's purview. Do any other board members have questions regarding the transportation? Mr. Dorian? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson?
Were you?
Still waiting to ask a question. I'm sorry. Yep, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. So if students are attending North Pole High School, that's their regular school, but they have a class at Hutchinson, so we are not able to provide them transportation for that class that they are scheduled to take, or?
Not at this time. We're not able to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dorian?
Thank you. On the vans, are the van drivers employees of Durham? And part of the reason I ask is I know that an offer was, recruitment went out to staff to see what the staff wanted to drive. My concern is if it's, let's say, a support staff member who's on hourly wage, there was a dollar amount for driving a van, does that get adjusted because they're on an hourly wage, but it's from Durham? So I'm trying to figure out where we are. And related to that, I know the van drivers don't have to have the same qualifications as the bus driver. Where are we in recruitment and having those people available to start going?
We did, we did send out an invitation to current district employees to, if they're interested in driving a van and it works into their schedules, we did send out that invitation. We had a pretty good response. Not everyone, it was just kind of, are you interested, sort of, an email, and not everyone that was interested actually figured out that they wanted to do it. But they, originally, we thought that we could have them be district employees and just clock in and do their regular time, but because of the way that the vans are leased to Durham, they need to be Durham employees. And they do need to go through a level of training and process to be Durham employees. However, the advertised pay is what they will be paid for any time that they would drive the van. So we're still working through the details of how that interaction's going to happen, but they will receive an hourly wage, and they will be employed by Durham, but it will be the hourly wage that we had published. So with that, I'll have Andy DeGraw add anything that he might want to clarify that.
Is that working?
Yeah. Just as Ms. Mullin stated, due to legal and liability issues, they would be direct employees of Durham and on Durham's clock.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to return the chair to Ms. Luke. I just want to return the chair to Ms. Luke.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith.
He's waiting for Durham. He's just waiting for Durham to reply to that.
Oh. Durham, are you able to? Will Zermans?
Yeah. So, yes, they would be our employees on our clock. We are, we have, they'll go through an application process with us, and that process has actually already started with many of them. They'll go through our training. The van driver training is not quite as extensive as, you know, an actual CDL with air brake and the endorsements that are required. There's not a large There's not a large difference, but there is a little bit different of a training that's required. So they'll be, they'll be fully trained by Durham, they will be employed by Durham while they're on the clock driving the vans. And as previously indicated, we're still working through the details of how that's going to be divvied up. But right now, we're doing the application process with the volunteers and we'll be starting the training process with them shortly.
Just a quick follow-up. So am I clear then, we have no van drivers at this time? And it will be several weeks before that will be in place?
It will be, it will be at the earliest probably two to three, just how the training process works itself out. But we do not currently have van drivers that are just specific van drivers yet, no.
Thank you.
I will add to that, that Durham has expressed extreme flexibility to helping van drivers get the training that they need so they don't miss their work time. So they're being very flexible and working with those applicants to get their training.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. Since we're only operating about half the bus routes that we budgeted for, I asked last week for projected savings for the rest of the year. And you did respond today that you could not calculate that, and I apologize, but I find that unacceptable. And I asked through the chair that as financial stewards of the district's finances, that we do be provided with an adjusted projected cost of the routes that have been noticed to the public, which is what, 60 routes of the 100-plus routes? So that we can compare that to the budgeted amount for transportation? And then that will provide us with the savings we can project and then reallocate those funds as we see fit.
So first of all, there's an assumption that having the vans is going to be a savings.
This doesn't have to do with the vans, this has to do with the reduction in routes, to be clear, sorry.
Okay, okay, so the reduction in routes, we can calculate. As far as savings for transportation, we don't know yet what that's going to look like because any monies that we're saving from not having the routes will go towards the vans.
Can we get that projected out and sent to the board, if that's the will of the chair and the board?
I think what's being said is that we need to give them time to see how the transportation goes in the next two to three weeks to ensure that we know further out what it might look like, to give the board an actual, accurate number because things are still in flux. So I would like to give administration more time to ensure that they have a more solid and sound projection through the year. So give them a few weeks to ensure that we know that, yes, this is the number of routes that we're holding at, yes, this is the van routes that we're having, so that they're not having to redo those numbers over and over, but that we actually have a more sound number when we talk about budget.
May I follow up?
Go ahead.
May I request that we have a projection by the September 20th meeting that gives them over a month?
Mrs. Maline, I'm going to defer to you if that is...
We can do what we can, we'll find out what we can by then, I don't know. It'll be, it'll fluctuate throughout the year, just depending on what happens. Projections are going to be pretty squishy.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson and then Mrs. Smith is in the queue.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Durham employee spoke to, we have an influx of people working this summer in the construction industry and they've brought up some temporary employees from the lower 48. And there should be a pretty, hopefully a clean swap of those as those employees go back home to their hometown and we get our bus drivers back who have been participating in summertime work here in that industry. I heard the number, the date of sometime around September is when that swap should kind of be completed by, those folks need to get back to their school that starts in September. So I would think maybe November, December, that would give us a good month, month and a half of cruising and have a pretty decent idea as to where we stand for buses, routes, and let the van thing pan out. So in my opinion, I, you know, you guys can cram numbers together as many times as you want and send it my way, but I would appreciate something, maybe sometime November, December would be a pretty fair assessment of where we stand as far as that's concerned. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I would not like to hear about imaginary projections. I just appreciate a report at the end of the first semester regarding how much has not been spent, that was projected to be spent in that semester. So I do not agree with wasting staff's time creating projections.
All right, thank you. I would like to, after we get those October counts and we have more of the finalized number of the students, if we can just get a brief, a brief understanding of where the transportation is sitting at that point in time and of any savings. Thank you. Any further questions for Mrs. Maline? Are we still having questions on transportation or are we ready to move on? It looks as though we're ready to move on from Durham. Mr. Zimmerman, you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting, but we really do appreciate your time. We appreciate your company's efforts and the service that you're providing for our students and our families within the North Star Borough. So thank you so much for attending this meeting.
Thank you for the time to speak, I can speak on behalf of Durham. We're very appreciative of the community's patience as we work through this and the partnership. And we'll continue our efforts to staff as best as we can throughout the year. Thank you for the time, very much appreciated.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Doran, we're going back to you with your question for Mrs. Maline.
So just to outline some of the efforts that our human resources department has gone through to recruit for the positions that we need. They have called former teachers, retired teachers, gone down through less of retired teachers. We looked at our sub-list of any of our substitute teachers that are certified, talked to them about the possibility of coming on as a full-time contracted teacher. We've reached out to our partners at UAF, to the chemistry department at UAF to see if there was anyone within their ranks that would be willing to come and teach at a high school. They reached out to the grad assistants that are, they're working on their upper-level certifications to see if they would be interested. We did get interest through that. We have reached out through national networks to see if there's teachers around the country that would be interested in locating up here. We've gone through other hiring, like hiring platforms like Indeed and other platforms. Actually, they've just cold-called some people that said, I heard that you teach, or I heard that you might be interested in teaching. They have literally been on the phone, calling people, working with partners, finding people in places that were quite surprising, but they found them. So they've been, they've been really turning over every rock and shaking every tree.
Do a follow-up?
Yes.
And could you just talk to the number of people and the willingness to pitch in?
Oh, right.
I think people who have been mentors, coaches, e-learning, you mentioned ELP, but give us a sense of that because I think, what I understand, people have been really good in being in uncertain settings in a sense.
Yes, yes, to that question. We have asked people to be really flexible and they have been. Like I mentioned, some of our ELP teachers were asked to move into a classroom and they said, okay. And then we were able to hire a teacher, so then they moved back out of the classroom. So within a matter of a couple of weeks, it could be, you're teaching third grade, oh no, you're not teaching third grade, you're teaching ELP again. So that kind of movement has been happening as we recruit. We want to turn those people back to their other jobs. We have our teaching and learning department instructional coaches who've been on alert that they may be moved into a classroom, so they've been kind of in uncertain territory, waiting to see if they need to be moved in. So that kind of flexibility is going on within the staff. E-learning teachers that had come and thought they were teaching e-learning and now are saying, no, you're actually going to be in a classroom. Some of them have said, I'll make that transition, and some have said, no, I'm not interested in going in the classroom and have decided not to teach. So we've done that, we've made some movement within programs. Again, the teachers are really flexible and while it is a monumental task to go from teaching kindergarten to teaching sixth grade, people have been willing to do it.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, Ms. Maline, can you talk to me about whether or not we've reached out to our military spouses on either, I assume that, you know, with their expertise coming from wherever they, what's the status of that?
Yes, those are our first, first people to reach out to is our folks that are joining our community through our military connections. A lot of them come in, I shouldn't say a lot, some of them come in with certifications from other states. And so we reach out to them and say, are you interested in getting an Alaska certificate? Are you interested in having a full-time job? And we place them as they're, as we can. So, yes, we are actively searching for military partners. In fact, I was in an orientation for our subs and I just kind of was asking what people's background was. And one of the subs said she'd just gotten here and she has a certificate, but not in Alaska, in Texas. And I was like, we need to talk to you a little bit further about becoming a full-time teacher here in the district. So it's those kinds of things that have been happening every day within the district.
So just to follow up, I believe it was some time ago that our legislators put in an amendment or something for military to be able to secure licenses and hopefully that transports over into a teaching license, yes?
Yes, we are working on that. They also have, the state also has an avenue by which we can advocate for an emergency certificate to get certified teachers in the classroom and give them a chance to get certified and have a certification while they come into the classroom.
So the only last comment I have is, with that monumental effort that has been put forth, the only little point that I think might be missing is that we need support staff to teach a program because we have a lot of support people who actually have that ability. They just, you know, have a couple of things that need to comply with and be signed off on and they've already been demonstrating and carrying the load of classrooms for quite some time. So love to see some kind of opening for those people who wish to do that, that are support professionals. Thank you, Ms. Maline.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes, ma'am, to Ms. Anderson's point, do we have any idea in how long it could possibly take to be able to facilitate an easier or expeditious transfer once a teacher comes in to actually help out with Alaska? Talking to some of the spouses and hearing some of the things we are at the Ileson community, I think there is some level of interest, but it does appear, again, I say this very unscientifically, it does appear that there is a little, a level of aversion based on having to face the rigors of the accreditation process here in Alaska. Do we know about approximately how long that'll take? That's something I would like to be able to take back to Ileson and share with our network to be able to help out if possible. Thank you.
If an individual comes into the district with a certification from another state, they can get a provisional license and be moved into a classroom if that's what they want to do. Some of our conversations have been that they're not ready to do that yet, but if that's what they want to do, they can, they can get that either emergency certificate or provisional certificate and they can move right into the classroom. So that can happen right away. I will say it is somewhat of a, or it has been historically and the state's working on a reciprocity agreement. But at this point in history, it still is a little bit arduous for incoming educators. But the state is working through that and hopefully soon, there will be a reciprocity agreement in place.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have Mr. Doran and then Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Maline, thank you for fielding all our questions. I know that we're, start the 10-day count where we look at who's in the seat, do we see their eyes? But could you give us a preliminary at this point, either yourself or through the assistant superintendents, what our enrollment projections are for tomorrow?
So I will say that I, that it is an encouraging trend that we're seeing happening right now. I'm very encouraged in what I'm seeing with enrollment, but like you indicated, there's really no way to know until we have people show up tomorrow. And as is always the case, there are students that have showed up that haven't enrolled and there are students that are on a roster that don't show up. So that's a little bit what the 10-day count's going to show us. But I will say that we're seeing an upward trend in our enrollment right now.
I do a follow-up?
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. Recognizing the 10-day trend, we had an enrollment count last spring, what's our enrollment count? You know, the teachers' principals are looking at tomorrow. I'm glad to hear that it's looking better. I'm assuming that's higher enrollment than we projected. But what's our number, what's our ballpark?
Yeah, I, I'm just so cautious to give a number because it's so fluid. We are above projections, though, so that's, that's good.
Okay, so tomorrow you'll get the first count?
We'll get our first count tomorrow.
Can we get a report on that then? Is it reasonable to get what your numbers are tomorrow?
We can do that. Are we able to do that, Andy?
Yes, so, Mr. Doran, the 10-day count, as you mentioned, starts tomorrow. By midway through that 10-day count, that second half, numbers are really going to solidify. The difficult challenge we have is lining up power school numbers, which as Ms. Maline indicated, are not reliable. They don't historically provide us, sometimes it's not an accurate picture at all in our, in our direct, actual experience. So head count, actual children in seats compared to that power school number, those numbers will line up as we progress through the 10-day count. We'll be able to provide the board updates, several updates through that 10-day count. And the farther we get through, the more, the more stable and solid that number will become.
Right, I recognize that, I'm still looking for a number. So appreciate the effort. I guess, just in general, as my last follow-up with it, perhaps through Ms. Maline, your, the assistant superintendent, are there any schools that are looking, I mean, what are the principals talking about, are they, what are we hearing?
The principals are looking at full classrooms. We have seen some addition to staff because of enrollments that we've seen particularly in kindergarten. So principals are looking at full schools and full staff, or full schools and full classrooms. And all of the principals I've talked to are really excited for tomorrow to get here and see who shows up at their schools.
If I may, President Luke, if I may, just one more. Mr. Doran, as far as looking for a number, our projection, here's context, our projection is 12,200. is 12,200, based on power school numbers that are, as I mentioned, can be at times very unreliable, based on where those numbers stand. Now, we expect, as Ms. Maline mentioned, to to come in above projection. But where, where, how, how far above projections, we'll be able to communicate that to the board in the next couple of three to four days. So again, those numbers will, we expect to be above projections, and and specifics will start to come to the board shortly.
Thank you. I have uh, Mrs. Smith, and then Ms. Marotti, and then Mr. Sampson in the queue.
Thank you, I really appreciate us spending some time on this because over the summer and coming into school, um, you know, I I feel myself, I'm sure other board members have just been uh, barraged with questions from the public about these things. So um, my question is, I'm wondering how the enrollment at Hutch specifically is? Uh, with the panel issue, starting remote, and then also having the bus cut, is their program remaining sustainable? Have you seen a significant number of students withdraw from Hutch?
At this point, no, we have not seen a significant number at all. In my conversation with uh, Principal Taylor, um, she said a few, but I don't even know, uh, Mr. Minard, do we have any that have actually withdrawn from the school because of transportation?
I'm unaware if um, any have actually dropped, but I do know uh, that enrollment staying stable, um, even with our North Pole families, that was our biggest concern going into it. Uh, but we've made connections with those families, and most have made arrangements to ensure that their students continue to stay at Hutch.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Marotti, and then Mr. Sampson.
Um, through the chair, I'd like to request what we received last year, which was um, at at every regular board meeting, an update on the enrollment. Um, and I appreciate Mr. Doran's attempt at getting a projected enrollment, and I appreciate Mr. DeGraw for providing it to us. Um, so my expectation, if it pleases the rest of the board, is an update on enrollment at every regular board meeting. Um, I would also like open vacancies um, at every board meeting. This is really important information that board members need in order to make significant decisions going forward. Um, and if, we have an amazing executive director staff that can pull that information for us, so it would be greatly appreciated if, again, it pleases the chair and the board.
Currently, I think we're gonna get the projected and the actual numbers here in the next 10 days, um, and I would allow, I would like to allow our administrative staff to continue to do the operational, especially our HR department, to continue to be in charge of the operational hiring of all of our, our staff.
May I follow up?
Is it a question about staff hiring?
It's clarification, so you're okay with the enrollment, but not the staff vacancies?
They already stated that they were gonna give us the enrollment numbers after the 10 to ensure that we understand where that is. Um, I have full confidence and faith in our administrative staff and their abilities to continue to work on hiring our staffing um, needs for our district. Mr. Sampson?
Thank you. My question was just in reference to the 10-day count. We, we'll find out what the numbers of the 10-day count are after the 10 days, correct?
We can give you updates along the way, and what what it's looking like, but as Mr. DeGraw indicated, the further through the 10-day count, the more accurate it's going to be. Until we get through this a little bit, it's gonna be changing. So we can give you a mid, you know, we give you a beginning, middle, and end?
The end will be the most accurate, right?
Exactly, at the end of our 10-day count, will be the most accurate.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much, Mrs. Maline. Um, it looks like we are gonna go ahead and move forward with the agenda. Um, I am actually going to backpedal just for a moment here, since I was able to come to the meeting. Um, I apologize for my tardiness, I had some uh, a little kiddo that needed some things. So, um, for my president's report, golden objective, ensure staff, uh, each student, staff, family, and community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Um, there are two big things that we have going on that need to be completed and/or started um, here immediately. Um, the first that I'm gonna discuss is the superintendent search. Um, that is something that will be ongoing um, throughout the, this first semester. Um, we are, um, I'm going to ensure before I get off the board that we have everything set into place so that the new board, um, when that, when that board gets sworn in, they are able to take um, this search and move it forward immediately and start having actionable items. Um, so, um, I have already started working with Mrs. Tuttle, or with administration to get um, some RFPs out there so that we can get a company here that can help us and assist us with the superintendent search. Um, as of the last search, um, there were four companies, we're looking outside and seeing if there are any other companies that are viable option here in the state of Alaska. Um, and um, we will um, be getting that onto the agenda pretty immediate here, um, to ensure that there is a company so that once November 1st comes, the new board can then take this company, they have an outline, a timeline, get the information out that a super antenna is needed within our district and in our borough so that we can get um, applicants pretty much immediately. And so that is our goal. My goal is not to do anything other than ensuring that a company is in place that can facilitate and help with the super search. Um, and once the new board gets sworn in, they can then take that information and move it forward and make the decisions that are necessary by that current board. Cause I want to ensure that this gets out there um, ASAP. Um, the next thing is following up on the committees of the board. Um, that was a big topic that the board has taken on this past year. Um, we had training from AASB, um, we have had a subcommittee within the board that came up with a recommendation, a recommendation from ASB, as well as a recommendation from administration. Um, next board meeting, so we're gonna start the process because this is dealing with our policies. And so when we're dealing with our policies, we need to ensure that we have a first reading of policies, and then a second reading of policies to then vote those in um, to our actual policies. So our goal is to have our first reading by the first meeting in September, so the ninth, uh, excuse me, I apologize, the sixth of September is the first reading. The second reading will be the 20th at that board meeting in which we vote. Um, and then the month of October, we can utilize that month to ensure that administration has the opportunity to update any and all changes um, to the policies, as well as align the ARs to fit the vote of the board. So that once the new board does come into play, um, committees are set up as uh, we have worked through for this entire year. Um, so that is the goal of the next two months, um, to wrap that up and finalize that. Um, but that is really the goal and the focus, to ensure that the board can um, utilize their time to focus on what the roles and responsibilities of the board are, which is to hire a superintendent, um, to be in charge of, and and the policies, and the committees in which we have been discussing for this last year, and ensure that those are all wrapped up and um, done correctly. Mr. Doran, did you have a question?
Just a clarification, the RFP for the superintendent search, did you say that has gone out, or it's going to be going out? And then I believe that that'll normally be a 30-day turnaround or something, is it?
Correct, so it has not gone out yet. Um, Mrs. Tuttle and I have been researching other companies to see if there are other viable companies that can um, work within Alaska and and serve the needs of of the district. Um, currently, we still do have the four that were from last super search, but I want to ensure that we do have other options, um, and other companies that we are looking at as well, but that we're not just um, looking at the same companies that have been utilized in the past, just because we have utilized them before.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, well, thank you so much, I appreciate um, that moment and being able to circle back and and discuss um, the important matters of the board. Um, we do have no unfinished business. But that leads to our first action item. Um, resolution 2023 dash 03, honoring, and I apologize if I get a little bit emotional on this one. Honoring and thanking Sharon Tuttle for her service to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education and School District. Goals and objectives, create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Resolution 2023 dash 03 honors and thanks our very own Sharon Tuttle, and expresses the school board's wholehearted appreciation for her outstanding contributions, devoted service, and unwavering dedication to the school board and the students, families, and community members of the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. The, and sincerely thanks her for a job well done, congratulates her on her retire, well, begrudgingly congratulates her on her retirement, and wishes her all the best as she starts the next chapter of her life. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve resolution 2023 03, honoring and thanking Sharon Tuttle for her service to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education and School District.
Second.
Now that it's, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, um, before I move um, to administration or to the board, I would like to open up for public testimony. Um, first, oh, we need to read the resolution first, is that correct? Yes. This is why I say begrudgingly, Mrs. Tuttle. And because this is a little different, um, if it's okay, could I have each board member read a paragraph um, to this resolution, starting with Colonel?
Whereas, can I start there?
Yes, please.
Whereas, Sharon Tuttle has proudly called Fairbanks home for the past 47 years, beginning her long career with the Fairbanks North Star Bureau School District on July 23rd, 1992, and will be retiring on September 2nd, 2022, after a distinguished 30-year career dedicated to the students, families, staff, school board, and community. And?
Whereas, Mrs. Tuttle has served the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District with distinction in many capacities at the school and administrative levels as a trusted staff member, enthusiastic volunteer, loving parent, and devoted grandparent, beginning her career as a personnel technician in the personnel office, in the district central office at Old Main, where she was hired to be responsible for the district's substitutes, the teacher applicants, and applicant hiring pool. And?
Whereas, Ms. Tuttle transferred to Weller Elementary in 1995 to serve as, as the school's administrative secretary, with the added bonus of being in her family's home school, where she would be closer and more involved in her daughters Casey and Kelly's day-to-day education. And whereas, in addition to Ms. Tuttle's full-time secretary position, she was also very involved as a parent and a volunteer, helping to establish Weller's first and formal after-school program, and serving as the school's program coordinator for three years, serving as the school's family night coordinator for seven years, and volunteering on the school's PTA, organizing and chairing many students and family events, as well as serving as the PTA treasurer for three years, and co-president for one year. Followed with serving as the treasurer of Tana Middle School PTA during her daughter's time at the middle school. And?
Whereas, Ms. Tuttle, after nine years as Weller's administrator secretary, transferred to Lathrop High School in 20, uh, 2004, as administrator secretary, followed by full circle back to the administration center in early uh, 2006, to serve as the executive assistant to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, where she has served with dignity, integrity for the past 16 and a half years. And?
Whereas, Ms. Tuttle's tenure as the school board's executive assistant, there have been 303 regular meetings, 459 special meetings, and 306 work sessions, for a total of 1,068 board meetings. And the board commends Ms. Tuttle for her excellent attendance record, missing fewer than 10 meetings during her entire tenure. And?
Whereas, Mrs. Tuttle's exceptional organizational skills and attention to detail, coupled with her expertise, expertise and guidance regarding federal and state statutes, board policies, administrative regulations, and parliamentary procedures, have been an invaluable asset to the school board and its continued legal compliance. And aided by her grace and her ability to remain calm and steady under the pressure of some intense situations, have enabled Mrs. Tuttle to effectively take on the most difficult of tasks during some of the most unprecedented times. And?
Whereas, Mrs. Tuttle was entrusted to serve as the board's liaison between it and the public, including acknowledging every constituent email received by the board, which at times reached into the hundreds during a week. Responding to the public's inquiries and requests for school board information, documents and records, preparing accurate meeting agendas and minutes of the board's business, all of which were accomplished timely and exceptionally well with accuracy and fidelity.
And?
Whereas, Mrs. Tuttle's neutrality, neutrality and impartiality, providing equitable service, which she provides with compassion and kindness, when working with educators, students, parents, guardians, and the community at large, have made her very successful working in a political environment, while retaining her ability to stay neutral and empathetic. And?
Whereas, through the years and all of her positions, Ms. Tuttle has consistently earned the respect, confidence, and trust of the board members, supervisors, colleagues, and the community at large. Due to her integrity and her strong work ethic, her kind treatment and consideration for others, her outstanding character, her reliability and dependability, her encouragement, and her well-earned reputation as a trusted, and her ability to be an active and impartial listener and confident, providing sound advice and guidance to her colleagues, supervisors, board members, board presidents, and her ability to work as a fully engaged team member as her consistent, her consistent and timely responsive to inquiries and other calls for assistance, and her wealth of a sharing historical district knowledge.
Now, therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education expresses its wholehearted appreciation to Sharon Tuttle, and honors her for outstanding contribution, devoted service, and unwavering dedication to the school board and the students, families, and community members of Fairbanks North Star Borough and School District, and sincerely thanks her for a job well done. Congratulations, congratulates her on her retirement, and wishes her all the best as she starts this next chapter of her life.
Yes.
I'm guessing before I give anything to Mrs. Tuttle and continue on, I should do testimony, and we should probably do a vote. Um, first, on the public testimony, we have Ms. Wendy Dominique. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of, um, give us the area in which you live, and you will have two minutes to testify. give us the area in which you live, and you will have two minutes to testify.
I have one grandson that said it's okay for me to come, and the other grandson, I'm supposed to pick him up at eight-thirty, okay? Anyway, we made it. My name is Wendy Dominique, D-O-M-I-N-I. This way. You can still hear me?
Yeah.
Can you still hear me? Okay, I think we're fixed. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. D-O-M-I-N-I-Q-U-E, that's how you spell my last name, and I live in Fairbanks. I would just like to say, I promised I won't cry. I did all my crying before I came, and I'd just like to say Sharon Tuttle is one of the kind of people that you come across once in a lifetime. I have to go back to what my mom said to me a long time ago. If you leave this world with one person that you can call a friend, that would be Sharon Tuttle for me. I want her to enjoy her retirement. She has been one of the best employees that I have seen in my seventeen years that I served on the board. She can now enjoy her ninety-nine grandchildren and her one great-grandchild now. Carm, you have had the best possible training of anybody in this district that I can see. She will teach you everything humanly possible. She will always walk away with a smile. And I know I have carried her over huddles that I shouldn't have carried her over, but she always smiled at me afterwards. I want to say Sharon, your job is complete. You have signed, sealed, and delivered everything that you could possibly do for this district. And I want to thank you, and thank you, and thank you for everything that you helped me with, for everything that you pulled me through, and you continue to assist me in life struggles that I'm going through. But you have a great retirement, and I would like to make a motion one of these days to say this is the Sharon Tuttle boardroom. Thank you ever so much for everything.
Ms. Wendy, we tried. Thank you so much. The next person we have listed, it only says Schmidt. If you will come up to the front, state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
My name's Jennifer Schmidt, and I live at ten ninety-three Steel Creek Road. And I consider myself very fortunate to have interfaced with Sharon in lots of different ways. I first met Sharon Tuttle at Weller Elementary School. We were both parents with kids at the school, and I, we worked together in the PTA. And then she became the administrative secretary there and did a beautiful job with families and kids and staff and just, you know, everything kind of revolved around Sharon in the office. Even my husband, who was coordinating the Weller Ski Club when he took that over, he came home and he said, that Sharon, she is so organized. I was really delighted to see her in that position. Then, of course, when my children were at Lathrop, she was there, and then we were able to steal her way to the school board. And I worked with her during superintendent search when I was on the school board. She was such a pleasure to work with. She oriented the school board members and never made us feel silly about any questions we asked. She helped the board go from paper to digital. I mean, you may not realize, we had a lot more paper than you've had. And then, I mean, it was just amazing when you were holding some of the large meetings with very stressed parents and staff, how Sharon juggled the digit, you know, the virtual meetings during the beginning of the pandemic. And she just always sounded calm and organized. I want to congratulate Sharon and her family on a well-deserved retirement, and I hope on Tuesday nights you will either have your bathrobe on, your slippers on, and not the radio on, or that you'll be out having a wonderful dinner with your husband.
Thank you. I am going to turn the time to board members for board comments. Mr. Doran?
Everyone had a loss for words. But my first thing that I think of with you, Sharon, is how much I've appreciated your feedback. And actually, one of her recent ones was I asked, what could I do better as a board member? And she said, well, be a little shorter, a little more succinct. Which I think is, is one of those things that we need to hear. Is one of those things that takes a lot to tell somebody else to do better. But you're also good at saying, you know, what, what you do well. And in that spirit, the thing that strikes me, that stands out above all the many things I could talk about and were referenced here, is the fact that you help me, you help us be better at what we do. And in the conversations over the years that I've had with you, whether as a principal or as a board member, that is the thing that really comes through. You are always looking how to help somebody be better. And the giving of yourself comes through all of us to kids. And that's what we're all about, and you keep that in front of us. And the memory I will never forget, and I share with people, is that when we finish a board meeting, you're one of the first ones to, oh, wait a minute, how many are here talking? You know, you really watch out for us and greatly appreciate that. So, thank you, and we certainly wish you all the best.
Sweet, sweet Ms. Tuttle. We could probably sit here all night like we usually do. But Ms. Tuttle, what a, what a wonderful, beautiful soul. Always positive, always smiling, always uplifting. It's just been an honor and a pleasure to, to work with you and simply be in your presence. I hope you enjoy your retirement to its fullest. God bless you.
Well, Ms. Tuttle, for me, I am happy that you're gonna be able to spend time with your family and do things that you love and that are important to you. Or thank you for the time and your expertise that you've given to me personally. And, you know, some, in this job, being on this board, it's, is, can be very stressful. It can be a very daunting task. It can be very emotional. And, you know, sometimes when you're talking to somebody, you just want to vent. You don't need them to agree with you. You don't need them to have an opinion. And being able to do that and never hear not one blessed thing that I have said, not that I wouldn't remind Pete and it to anybody that I was talking about at the time, because I was burning. That's, that's a rare thing in the world today. You're exposed, you know, you're put on blast, you're put on hold, you're counseled. But the integrity and, and the confidence, the confidential part of how she walks out this job is a total blessing. And it, I just wish her the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I came to the board during COVID. So I met Ms. Tuttle under the probably most difficult of circumstances. And I was shocked and awed at, honestly, how well Mrs. Tuttle did the Zoom. And, you know, I think, oh, well, she's older than me, and I'm struggling with the Zoom, and how's this gonna work? And it was just seamless, and she was the one, and it was so impressive. And then throughout that time, you know, we had, the testimony is limited, only so many people, and people would call me and they'd say, is it worth it? Like, does she put everyone truly in the order that they call or email? And they, and, and I could so confidently say, if you're the ninety-ninth person that calls or emails, you are the ninety-ninth person on Sharon's list. Like, absolute, total positive about saying that. That I never had any doubt about Mrs. Tuttle's impartiality or integrity. And it is just so extremely rare to find that in a human. I'm generally untrustworthy of people, you know? I, I, I wonder about them. It took me just one minute to trust Mrs. Tuttle. So I think that really says everything about who you are. Thank you for your time here.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cry, so I'm not gonna look at you. It, it's been said about retirement that after climbing the mountain, you can finally enjoy the view. But Ms. Tuttle, not only did you climb the mountain, but you helped hundreds of board members, community members, educators, and students climb their own mountains. Our board is only successful because you took such good care of us. You will be missed. You will be remembered. Wendy, we tried to get the boardroom named after her. She's too humble, though. And we are so thankful for the time that you provided. Enjoy that view, and please keep in touch with me.
I've been crying the whole time. I didn't know how difficult this was gonna be. And the fact that you've held my hand the past two years has been so wonderful. I don't feel like I'm failing because you've held my hand. So, thank you.
I've, I've only been on the board for not that long, but it has been such an amazing experience to come and see you every, every night. And you're, you're so positive, and I'm so sad to see you go so soon for me. So really enjoy your retirement.
About fifteen months ago, when, when I agreed to come and serve the district in this capacity, I, I honestly, literally got off the call and said to my husband, well, at least I'll have Mrs. Tuttle. And I got here and met with Dr. Gaborik for the first time, and she said, yeah, Sharon's gonna be retiring. And I told her, I said, this would have been good information to have before I agreed to come. So from my perspective, Mrs. Tuttle, thank you for staying and for being here for me to, to step into a role like this and to have someone like you to support is, is, there's, there's no way to accurately articulate what you've meant to me over the last several months. And it's not just your amount of knowledge. It's how you support people, and it's been said over and over again, it's the character and integrity that you walk in that, that makes the difference. So from my perspective, Sharon, it's not your knowledge, it's who you are. You're a prize, Mrs. Tuttle, and you will be missed.
Thank you. And Colonel Alvarado, I apologize. I started with Mr. Doran. And then also Colonel Suri, I see your hand raised as well.
Well, Ms. Tuttle, I wish we could have got to meet under better circumstances. It's not awesome, and of course, it's like my entire life, the good people leave when I show up. I'd like to think it's not a coincidence, though. Ma'am, it sounds like you've made an awesome impression. I wish I could, could have got to work with you and learn from you, but I'm sure your legacy is gonna live on. And I will learn through the people that I've been lucky enough to be around. Ma'am, I thank you very much.
Colonel Suri?
Hey, Ms. Tuttle, it's, it's Nate. I just, I just want to say this. You're, everything I've heard, everything I've seen, you lit up to the measuring bar, which is the positive impact you have on humanity. And everything I've heard tonight, that is all you've done. You've created joy in people's lives. And so you're gonna go down in history, and I, and I vote right now unofficially that we name the boardroom after her. It's been a pleasure getting to know you, and you have a great and wonderful rest of your career.
Thank you, Colonel Suri. So funny story. We tried. And we have to follow law and inform people if we do a background check, and that's part of our policy. And Ms. Tuttle said, stop right there. So I, we really wanted her to go out with an incredible thank you. But Mrs. Tuttle is the quiet force behind the district and has been for her entire tenure. And then the entire sixteen years she has been here in the admin building, working with the school district and the school board. She is not one to ever speak of any of her accolades, speak of the amazing things she has done, the service she has given to each and every one of us, each and every person, student, employee, who has graced our district. But we could not allow her to leave without knowing and going down in history just how incredible of a human being Mrs. Tuttle is. And when it states in the resolution that Mrs. Tuttle has consistently earned the respect, confidence, and trust of board members, supervisors, colleagues, and the community at large, due to her integrity and strong work ethic, her kind treatment and consideration of others, those words fall flat to the actuality of who she is. Mrs. Tuttle is an incredibly good and powerful force. And we appreciate you. We celebrate you. And we begrudgingly allow you to take the next chapter in your life and allow your husband to actually see you once in a while. We appreciate you and love you. Could we please get the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
And Mrs. Luke? Yes. Motion carried.
Now that it's official, and we did do the vote, and it was unanimous, we as a board would be remiss without thanking her and giving her some flowers. It's a little parting gift, as well as something from us for you and your husband. Because we adore him as well as you. And we would like to give Mrs. Tuttle just a moment to come up and speak so that you can actually hear her voice and it can be on record.
I don't usually talk. And it's hard, and especially under these circumstances, and I can't possibly thank everybody. And I can't possibly thank everybody enough. But no one does a job for thirty years without the support of so many people, and no one does it by themselves. So what I wanted to do is take the time to say thank you to so many people. And I can't really name everybody, but first thank you to Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Dominique for your kind comments here and to all the board members for your wonderful, and Mrs. Maline for your wonderful comments and everything you've done for me and the resolution. And yes, when they told me they had to get my permission about background check, that told me what they were gonna do, 'cause she wouldn't tell me what they were gonna do. Something, you wanted it to be a surprise? And, well, I'm not very good with surprises. So anyway, when I found that out, I was so honored and so touched. But this is the People's Boardroom. It belongs to all of us, all of our students, all of our staff, and the whole community. So I think it's more appropriate that it's the People's Boardroom, and that's why I declined. Uh, and this is a wonderful honor. And just to say some thank yous, um, I've tried to write down some names and things, and please don't be affirmative, I don't name people by name, but to the supervisors who originally hired me, Anita Gallantyne, the Director of Personnel for my job in HR, my Louise Androll, the Principal at Weller Elementary, who hired me there, the late Mr. Mario Gatto, who, who hired me at Lathrop, to Jennifer Schmidt and Dr. Short, Dr. Ann Short, who hired me for this position with the board. Thank you very much for getting me started. And then thank you, I think I counted eleven superintendents since nineteen ninety-two, and I might've been off by one, there might be one more, but five while I have served for this school board. Dr. Ann Short, Dr. Nancy Wagner, Mr. Pete Lewis, Dr. Karen Gaboric, and Mrs. Karen Maline. And thank you for your guidance, 'cause they are my bosses and my supervisor and as well as reporting to the board, so thank you. And to the board presidents I've worked with while in my position, Mrs. Schmidt, and then Mrs. Leslie Hidukovich, Mrs. Christina Brophy, Mrs. Heidi Haas, Mrs. Dominique, and Ms. Jennifer Luke, and Tim Dorn, Mr. Doran, that's right, Mr. Doran. That's right, thank you. And to all the board members, those current and those who have, I've served with over the years. So many people to, to possibly name, but thank you for your support 'cause I feel so appreciated and valued in this job, and that's because of all of you and everyone I work with. There's some key personnel people who have supported me through the years. Mrs. Jan Zaccora, who was a well a nurse, and I, I call them friends to this day, even though they no longer work for the district. Kathy Hughes, who's the executive director. Susan Pissette, who was the superintendent secretary and the board secretary prior to me. Pam Rogers, who was the superintendent secretary. Barb Havelik, who is, was the Assistant Superintendent Secretary. Lisa Corbett, the current Assistant Superintendent Secretary. And of course, Ms. Erin Povlin, our current superintendent secretary, who has been a lifesaver and like a sister to me. And I so appreciate everything you've done and how you've supported me. I will miss you. And there's so many more people that I can't possibly name, but... And of course, the support of my family. In all of my positions, my family has supported me, and they've all been family affairs. My daughters, Casey and Kelly, have been put to work in every job, cutting, organizing, cleaning, whatever needs to be done. And of course, my dear husband Brad. My job is his job as well. He is there for me night and day, and he has been so involved in this job. I feel like he deserves this as well. But a special thank you to him. He never listens to a board meeting, he never been to a board meeting, so he doesn't know, but I'll tell him I said it, that I love him and I appreciate his support and his love and his patience, especially on a lot of Monday and Tuesday nights. He has just been a godsend. And while I'm retiring from the, my full-time position, I plan to be still involved with the school district with, uh, I have the sixteen, not quite ninety-nine, I have sixteen grandchildren and one great-grandson. And they attend seven district schools currently. I expect to be very busy. And I would like to take this time to just thank all the educators who have educated mine and Brad's five children, all products of our school district, all very successful adults with families of their own, and our grandchildren for providing them all with an excellent education to make them set up for a excellent future and to be engaging and contributing members of our community. All but one still lives here, and all but that one, of course, is involved in our community somehow. And like I said in the beginning, no one does this job this long without the support for everyone. And so thank you from the bottom of my heart to everyone and for your support through the years for me and my family. And Carm, thank you for taking this position. I know you'll do well. And you're surrounded by a wonderful, wonderful group of people. Thank you, everybody. And if you need anybody to help do anything, call me.
Doesn't she get to do the walk after sending so many students and other staff members down the line?
Thank you again. The next resolution on the agenda is honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Core value embody respect for the diversity and dignity of all. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four proclaims September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages schools, staff, and students to honor the historic contribution of Hispanics, Latinos through research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been, uh, that's on the floor, that has been seconded. Ms. Magasin, uh, Ms. Matheson, could you please read the resolution?
Of course. Whereas the United States commemorates the heritage and culture of all Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, beginning on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the United States celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month as enacted in Public Law one hundred dash four hundred and two on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed significantly to the economic, cultural, and spiritual and political development of the Fairbanks North Starbrough. And whereas Hispanic Americans value knowledge and learning. And whereas the diverse student body of the Fairbanks North Starbrough School District includes Hispanic American students. And whereas Hispanic American exempt and classified staff support all students' learning. And whereas Hispanic American teachers distinguish themselves as educators in the Fairbanks North Starbrough School District classrooms. And whereas Hispanic American building administrators lead their schools with vision. And whereas Hispanic Americans have served on the school board in distinction. And whereas all citizens will benefit from an accurate portrayal of Hispanic, Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas research findings suggest that presenting Hispanic American culture, history, and perspective in the classroom promotes academic success for Hispanic American students. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Starbrough Board of Education proclaims September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages schools, staff, and students to honor the historic contribution of Hispanics slash Latinos through research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. And we had no public testimony, correct? Okay, thank you. Anything from board? Mr. Doran?
Just wanna say how much I appreciate the contributions that the Hispanic American community makes to her whole community. And that I really value the fact that we take time to look at these resolutions, not just as routine business, but to bring to the fore the importance of our students and families and community members that are all part of our district and the education of our students, of all our students, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Mrs. Tuttle, it looks as though we are ready for the vote. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here, yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three lobbyist contract approval. Goal and objective: Create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. The lobbyist contract with John Ringstead ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. If it is the school board's intent to extend a contract for this school year, a new contract will need to be approved for the period August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at a cost of fifty thousand dollars. And we have the contract in the agenda. Administration, is there anything that you... Oh, I apologize. Mrs. Tuttle, did we have any public comment?
Do we need the motion?
Oh, I apologize, we need the motion.
Move to approve the lobbyist contract for John Ringstead for the period August seventeen, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three at a cost of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Now we have the motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, thank you. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Administration?
I, I do just wanna comment how important I think it is for a district to have a lobbyist that represents us as a body. And I've had the privilege to work with Mr. Ringstead last year and his, um, his experience within the legislative body and how to navigate some, sometimes complex system. His ability to understand that and follow the, and track the education issues that are going on. I've really appreciated him and his efforts in that. So, um, I just, I just wanted to make comments about how important it is for us to have a lobbyist and what a fine job, I believe, Mr. Ringstead does for the district.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? See, oh, Mr. Doran?
No question, but a couple of comments that I think are pertinent to this. One of the things that it, um, the length of the contract, um, I think is significant. There was a point at which we used to approve a contract, this was several years ago, that was of a shorter duration. And, uh, but the fact that the legislature is operating basically all year. And, um, I really appreciate that Mr. Ringstead has been able to follow that and to, to work to cover all the bases. The fact that not only does he lobby, or more importantly, help to inform legislators about the district and keep us informed, as importantly, he mentors us and mentors administration so that we can be actually the voices for the district. And I think that's really significant in one of the services he provides to us. And then I just wanted to, and I wanted to note that this is not an increase to the contract and hasn't been for a couple of years. And I think that's important for the public to be aware of, that we're getting, in essence, more time. But, um, a very valuable return for this contract. And the last thing I wanted to say is that Mr. Ringstead posed a question that I've been able to use several times with legislators is kind of to pause and ask them their vision for the state and for education within that vision and how we can help support them in accomplishing that large vision that's there, which is a significant difference. And when he posed it, it was like, "Oh, wow, what a question to ask." And, and really, it pushes, pushed me to think in terms of the partnership, not just our vision for education, which is extremely important, which, which we wanna advocate for, for our students, but also how does that fit in that bigger picture and be that partner? So I appreciate his willingness to continue as our lobbyist.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, Mrs. Richardson, I believe we're ready for the vote. Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried. Perfect, thank you. I'm glad that that motion carried because it moves us to our next business, um, item of business. Information and reports. We are going to hear our lobbyist report from Mr. John Ringstead. Goal and objective: Ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Mr. John Ringstead?
I guess I'm, guess that's on. Thank you. Mr. Doran's comment about length of contract...
Mr. Dorn's comment about length of contract, I read it and said one of them ended a month ago, and the next one doesn't start till tomorrow, so I guess I'm in no man's land tonight, but we're kind of after the fact to some degree on the contract or on the session. Yeah, it was it was an interesting session. They're coming out of looking at this thinking, boy, we got this huge deficit, what are we going to do? How do we pay our bills? And before they're done, they got a multi-billion dollar surplus. So so as typical, the session was driven by money, and to a large degree, as we've been the last few years, was the debate around the money was driven by how big is our permanent fund dividend going to be? And that kind of hangs out there till the very end and and kept things uncertain. As it as it turns out, money-wise, not where you ideally want to be, but didn't do badly in the in the bigger scheme of things. And you have done the hard work of trying to figure out now how to spend that, so you've already done that. A couple of other thoughts. Legislation, I looked a couple of months ago, how many bills were introduced under the subject of education? And it was, I don't remember the number, it was like thirty or forty of them, but to look and see how many passed, more like one. A lot of bills get introduced, not all of them even get hearings. Part of part of what I hope to continue to be able to do is help you focus on the bills that likely will go somewhere or have the potential to go somewhere. You got plenty else to do to work on a bunch of bills that are going to go nowhere, so that to me is a waste of your time. The 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 main education bill that that got most of the focus is is a bill that had been several legislators that worked for several years, kind of referred to as the Reading Act. Part of it was early learning. It started out at one sense, very broad, and was kind of kind of tongue-in-cheek referred to as let's fix everything in education bill. As as the session went on, the hearings went on, in order to get through each committee through the process, the focus of the bill got narrower and narrower and narrower, trying to get enough votes to have something that would actually pass in the end. It, you know, it got through the got through the Senate, got to the House, kind of toward the end of the session, and in in House Education was having a very difficult time trying to get the support among the committee to get a bill out that they could put on the floor and and get passed. About ten days before the end of session, House Education tried to put a whole new expansion of marginally related material in the bill and completely brought themselves to a standstill for a week. And at the end of the session, the Senate came back, combining two or three pieces of it of other legislation dealing with education into one bill. There were some people that have concerns with that. For those that aren't intimately involved in legislative process, it's confusing, it's hard to follow, and it happens very quickly and very quietly. But in order to get something to pass as opposed to nothing, that was a way to get the mechanism through, and it worked. So there were there were two or three pieces in that, and I might get some support, some help on this statement between Mr. DeGraw and Mrs. Moline, but I think generally speaking, the bill at the end did nothing to hurt us, and and oftentimes, that's the first thing you're looking for. The other side of it is I don't know that it did great things to advance us or help us a lot. There are some things in there that will help us. There's a lot of a focus on on early learning and on reading, and those are good things. This is not the bill to fix everything in education. I don't think there is such an animal, but is that an accurate description? I think is the way the bill was. It didn't hurt us, helped us a little in a few areas, and and was there. Going forward, I think one of the things that I've heard some discussion through the session, that it, you know, some legislators are starting to think it's time to look at the BSA formula, more specifically into the area of district cost factors, which is a big deal, who gets, how you rate in the what, who's more expensive a community to live in? That may be coming up. That often is more of a two-year issue, but you need to be involved in that process. There are other parts of the formula that are people are looking at also. I have heard some concerns in the in the formula. For the local governments, it is if your tax assessed value of the property in your borough increases, it affects how much the state money gives, and and kind of the logic was, well, you're getting money, money, money over here, so you don't need ours as much. There are some of the local governments that are now talking about, maybe we need to address that, and I think that's a legitimate issue for our district to be involved in and something we probably should talk more about this fall. But I think that's that's one of them that that we need to pay attention to. I know with the discussions you have with the with the Borough Assembly, how much money you're going to they going to give us, and they're feeling like they're in a bind partly because of this other statute over here, so that's that's an issue also that's out there, so. Going forward, budgets are, you know, they were they're put at about a hundred dollars a barrel, I think it's just over, just under a hundred dollars a barrel. Prices are kind of hanging in there right now, they're not where they were going a couple of months ago, but, you know, to to make any bets at this point, I think are just foolish with all the volatility in the world, don't assume anything. I I think we need to go forward looking realistically at no great changes, but pressure all the time, pressure on on how much funding education's going to get, so. I I look forward to working with you folks and trying to get started on that in the next month or so, as your your election changes, I guess, in about sixty days, and and that always makes a change, and right behind that, the legislative change and organization that comes behind that to say who's going to actually be the leadership and driving the legislature in the next two years, so. As always, you know, I'm I'm around, I'm available, call whatever. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'll take a shot at it, but it's late in your day, so.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you for the report, and I noted that you said that in the fall, we should have a talk about the formula funding, the funding formula, and how that's going to impact us. If it pleases the chair, is that something that we can schedule?
Are you wanting to do it? Are you asking for something in like October, September? Is that what you're asking for, having a work session on it?
It would be up to the expert.
I let me take a shot at that. I I think the the first part is to get the board members up to speed on kind of how it works and what the real levers are that may change or need to change. Realistically, in your some in your structure, I'm assuming that we will have at least a couple of new faces, and so it would be prudent to say, let do it after the year together, and you know, your your committees, how you're going to organizationally set up, which kind of puts you more toward the end of October, so the new members can be up to speed, too. Going into that, after the November elections, and the way the organization will be put together going into December, typically, we have meetings with our, at least our interior delegation, prior to Christmas, and I think we should be at least thinking prior to those meetings that it's just something that we're going to want to talk to them about.
And I think I agree with Mr. Ringstead to wait until after, because we know for a fact that I'm not going to be here, and Mr. Sampson, so I think it would behoove the board to wait.
I may follow up?
Go ahead.
So just, you know, we don't, I don't know how else the board communicates about this, so I'm just requesting that we have a work on in on record, requesting that we have a work session with Mr. Ringstead, I guess, early November.
Yeah, and I'm assuming Mr. DeGraw, he's a great expert on how that formula works.
Yeah, on this specific topic. Thanks.
Mr. Dorn?
Maybe it'll come to a question to you, Mr. Ringstead, but it's related to this. Would it? We are going to have some new legislators. We had a fairly new, about a third of the legislature was new last go-around, we're increasing that. The conversation regarding the BSA and foundation formula and the differential, cost differentials, et cetera, that's going to a lot depend upon the new people. So I would think in terms of as a board, we would want that aspect of it weighed until we find out who's in there and where things are shaking out a little bit, but I think it's important to have that it may be very good for us to have a work session when we get to that. But I lean towards getting somebody there, knowing who's there. With that in mind, and to your best crystal ball, the conversation about looking at that, if it does go substantive, do you have any feel whether it's a matter of looking to invest in public education or looking at reducing the amount of money into public education? And I've, over the decades, when it has come to the fore, sometimes we're paying too much, and let's get prices right, the cost differentials right. However, right now, we're in a position, we need the state to invest. I don't know how the, I think there were real efforts from the legislature this year, if I read that correctly, so your perspective?
I think a couple of things on the part about timing, I think you're right on finding the changes in the legislature, and hopefully, we'll have new organizations of the both the House and Senate by mid-November, but we can do some homework ahead of that time in terms of what it works, how it works. They're very, quite frankly, I don't suppose you'd find half a dozen legislators that really understand the formula, but much less anybody else. I think all the CFOs do pretty well at that, but so I think you're right about the timing, and and both pieces are important to that. You know, I I didn't see a lot of discussion about reducing funding. I think there's a lot of kind of discussion about we're not getting our money's worth. I I have seen very little serious effort to reduce education funding from the legislature. I think that's a political reality that most of them don't want to do. I think the focus now is more about, let's make sure we get our money's worth. Now, the other side of that coin, then, is how much discussion is there about additional money? And and there is some, you know, when we had a surplus budget, you get a little money, there is a little money attached to to the the Readings Act. But I think that we have to look at, in the in the bigger scheme of things, maybe I should keep my mouth shut, but I'll say it anyway. If you if you, the Supreme Court has said, the earnings of the permanent fund have to be prioritized annually by the legislature against every other appropriation in the state. If you hold education funding flat and increase your permanent fund dividends by a billion dollars, does that tell me the prioritization of those two state programs? And I think that's a discussion that, or a thought that that you folks should give some consideration to, is saying, you go down there, and where is the money? Well, the money is in in the state budget, the money, clearly now, the dividends this year are the largest state appropriation. The second one, I think, is education, but it's a close call now between education and what has been referred to with Health and Social Services, which are now becoming two different entities instead of one, but that is the vast majority of the budget. So we have changed our prioritization from where we were five years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty-five years ago. It always used to be education was the big ticket item. And so Health and Social Services now has come running right up to be there, too, and that's been a few years now, and now the permanent fund dividend is there also. So I think that's a discussion that that you as board members should have and think about, okay, do we want to address prioritization? And then you can look and say, okay, how do we? How do we do this? If you want to invest in in education, you got to understand there's more money. The second piece, then, is if you're going to get more money, how do you spend it? And I think that part of that was this Reads Act this year was saying, let's put more love money into early learning and and reading at at the younger ages, but it's clearly focused more now on the districts that are not performing well, and there's a bunch of that money that that will go out, so quite frankly, there's a chance that our district won't get any of that. You know, the way that's set up, well, is that a good priority for us or not? You know, do we want to say that's not, that doesn't feel right to us? So in terms of prioritizations, how do you get in that discussion? And I think that's something we need to think about.
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson.
Mr. Ringstead, every year when we have a budget cycle, and we you've heard us talk about here earlier about our October count. So I think I asked this question before to Mr. DeGraw, how do we get the legislator? How do we change that, holding us accountable for that October count? And that's where our money's based on, when it it doesn't fit? And and how do you? How could you propose that we could tackle that, or is that something that we should?
I I think, you know, that that, like you say, we've come up before recently, in the last year or two, and it was very significant through the the COVID years. I I think that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that sits, I think that's a regulation, isn't it, Mr. DeGraw, that is a regulatory piece as opposed to statutory?
The twenty to count?
The the ten account period?
The twenty to count is in statute, yes.
Yeah. It's in, yeah, so I I think, you know, we need to look and figure out, how do we change that, but not just legislatively, but I think we really need to have some discussions with Department of Education. I mean, it it probably is not just our problem, it's probably everybody's problem. Is it real? Is it not? You know, is there a better way to do that? And and that could well be a discussion that would be with Commissioner of Education. That be right?
Yes, because it is statutory, it would require a statutory change, but as you're talking about this and talking about the bigger picture, if we open up the formula and the statutory requirements around reporting, that's a pretty all-encompassing overhaul of a lot of moving parts within it. So there would be conversations with Department of Education, with legislators who are willing to carry that kind of statutory change forward. It would be an orchestrated coup, so to speak. And then I I might just add to to the to the Reads Act, while a lot of the pieces that are in the Reads Act, our district is already doing, and we're not one of the lowest-performing districts, and we don't have the lowest-performing schools, but I will say that a rising tide lifts all ships, so as across the state, there's resources flooded into the system, we can take advantage of those resources, so so it it's probably not going to bring us any exact dollars or... other than the BSA increase. But I think the ripple effect has positive potential.
And I think that that's one with the idea of the bigger picture. If that is successful in those lower-performing areas, then the data that everybody's seeing is we're not getting the results, the data will start to change. And hopefully, when the, when people start seeing we're getting better results, then your support for education will grow. I think if people are comfortable with the results, but we've got a, that'll take time. I'm assuming that's a several-year effort. That answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Start to.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ringstead. We appreciate you coming in and informing us and helping the board set up for next year.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
We are on our last item, well, for board comments. And I just want to remind the board, we end at nine, so let's try to, unless, unless we need to extend, but let's try to be concise to allow families to focus on school starting tomorrow. But I would like to start with Colonel Suri, do you have any comments?
I'll just say, this is general for the meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to again thank Ms. Tuttle publicly. I know we've done that already, but I think there's not enough thanks for her. Like I said, the positive impact that she's had on humanity and the people of this community is truly incredible. And I just want to thank her again. And you've made a difference, a difference probably of a thousand people or more. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel Suri. Colonel Alvarado?
I just want to say thank you for having me again, and I look forward to being helpful to the board. Please use me as you guys can. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. I do have several, but I will try to be succinct on them. Thank you, welcome to Colonel Alvarado and also to Ms. Richardson at her first meeting here, fully in charge. So appreciate you both being members of our group. I sent to the board earlier today some information about the State Board of Education is considering the setting of the cut scores for a state assessment, the Alaska STAR test, AKA STAR. I think this is a great concern. I want to encourage board members and the public to consider commenting on these. Several times tonight, it was mentioned, especially in the last report, that data is very important. And that's how we judge our students and our staff and our schools. And right now, we have a sole data point that is the basis for almost all of that. AK STAR is a new test. It has not been analyzed for a student response. And I might mention that it's been about 20 years that the state has actually done an analysis of our statewide test. Significantly, in 2014 and for the 10 years prior, statewide proficiency is generally were 70 to 80%. In 2015, all of a sudden, it went to the reverse, 30 to 40% proficient. Two things happened in 2015 test. It was based on new standards, and it was also computerized. No analysis has been done on the impact of computerization of tests results. We've had three tests since 2015, the AMP, the PEAKS, and now AK STAR. So we've gone eight years with new tests, new format, has not been analyzed by the state. My concern with the cut scores is that they were based on the standards, not on the, any linkage to the test, the AK STAR. Standards have not been reviewed in 10 years. I would encourage people to look at how it impacts how students will be labeled. Schools will be judged. I think it is a disservice for us to do this with a very important data point that may or may not be accurate. And if it is not accurate, it impacts lives. So I'd encourage people to look at that. Look at the state board site, Department of Education. There's some good background information, you can see the impact. It will have a significant impact on how those data points, test scores are looked at. Just as an example, eighth grade math indicates less than a 15% proficiency rate. Is that accurate? Why did 85% of the state students pick the wrong answer? And I think we may even need to look at how students respond. So I would encourage that you think about either sending written comment by Thursday afternoon or to give public testimony at their September 6 meeting. I'd encourage that at least a delay in action until a full analysis is done. Or that they, at minimum, prioritize the analysis of our tests so that they are accurate before we start labeling educators who have done a tremendous job. Also, to Mr. Leguski's presentation, it's unfortunate that we can't have a board discussion on this, but I would encourage you to read the ordinance as amended. That may change after their work session. But I do know that there have been times over the years, few times, but several times that, when I've been there and other board members have been there, that something has come up with a board, a school, district-related item. We've been able to provide good information, sometimes correcting information, sometimes just providing additional information. I think it is important for us not to get involved in the debate, that's their body. But we are a resource for them, and this could possibly impede that opportunity. But also, just to reinforce, that it is a great opportunity for us to be there as representatives, and glad they have that. And then, just on a real positive note, as teachers and students start tomorrow and parents drop off their kids, we have a tremendous district. And this really was highlighted to me at a concert sponsored by the Summer Sessions, Music in the Garden with the community band. They did give a jazz concert. At least two staff, the conductor and another player member or staff musicians in our district. And what was wonderful is they highlighted different players, the number of students. And they, the conductor actually said, okay, this is one of the students here in Fairbanks. They're going on to college, or they're doing this and that and the other thing. But the highlighted student accomplishment. And I think that speaks so well for us. And there were other performers that are graduates of our district at those concerts. And then seeing the new teachers' orientation, I happen to be walking through. I didn't spend any time here, but just a quick look into this room filled with new teachers, the excitement of their getting oriented and coming on to the district. And then the success of the welcome back last Friday. That it was great to see the energy and feel what teachers are putting in to be ready, even among challenges. And I just want to give a shout out to the community. It was impressive, the number of people doing positive picketing. Two things struck me, as I think it was one of the biggest showings of positive picketers we've had. And it's always been a wonderful thing, but I think tremendous number. But also, and my gray hair being acknowledged, how many young parents and community members were there that to cheer on and welcome the teachers? It was truly impressive all the way around. So thanks for all their efforts, and best of luck to them tomorrow morning. And best wishes, it's going to be an exciting year.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to send a big thank you again to Ms. Sharon Tuttle. 1,068 board meetings, missing fewer than 10 meetings. It's just, it's just amazing, it's unreal. I'd like to thank Mr. Ringstead for participating in another year of service to the district. And thank you for everything that you do down in Juneau and the time you spend there away from your family. Colonel Alvarado, welcome. Thank you for taking the time to come down to our meeting. As long as, as well as Colonel Suri, thank you for participating in our meetings. We appreciate and we value the military service that you give, all the servicemen and women, and your input that you have here, it's highly valuable. A big welcome back to all the students. It's been a short summer, and I wish everyone the best of luck. Enjoy the school year to its fullest extent. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, just to like to congratulate our students and staff and community. As we do school tomorrow, I'm wishing our staff and students the best for a new year. And just looking forward to having this boardroom filled with students that bring us music and the accomplishments that, no matter where you go, and you can look on news feeds and you see our students who are successfully navigating their life. We have numerous athletes that are recognized and serving and participating on national teams, musicians. We have people who are writing Broadway productions. And so our, our staff produces and works and dedicated to an excellent education for our students. And I just thank you for the partnership with the community. And I wish them the best year ever. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to having my eight students this year. I have a new kindergartner in the district and seeing what wonderful opportunities they will encounter with our educators. I wanted to say that I did spend some time this summer checking out the summer school programs. And I also made an effort to check out the new Nordale Education Center. You always want to know that you did the right thing. And I can speak to the community that the Nordale Education Center is improving services for nearly 1,000 students in our district, including those in the homeschool program best, in the SMART program, and in the e-learning. And really, I couldn't have asked for a better turnout, the way that the education center has turned out. Things that I didn't even consider when we were debating making that change that have improved, such as the SMART program and the e-learning students being able to access PE and advanced science labs and other things. And I really just look forward to, you know, moving some other programs into that building in the future and seeing our students have the opportunities that they deserve. Because every student, whether they're in one of our alternative programs or in a building-based school, really deserve the opportunities for an equitable education. And this really does raise the bar for that. So I just wanted to let the community know that it's working and seems to be doing what, you know, what the board had intended. And I look forward to seeing it full of students doing improved education.
Ms. Maradi?
Thank you. Again, thank you, Ms. Tuttle, for your service to our whole community. To our community, a reminder that the reorganization and elimination of board advisory committees is on the agenda for two weeks from tonight. And I personally would greatly appreciate stakeholder perspective on this topic. Also, I do not know when the next parent engagement committee meeting is. It's not on our webpage. But I have a feeling that after the regular board meeting in two weeks, after we go over those policies, we'll have a better understanding and it'll be clear and announced. And then, lastly, welcome back to our educators and our staff. And I cannot thank you enough for your service to our students, and welcome back to our students. I really look forward to a great year ahead of us. Thank you all for listening tonight.
Mrs. Matheson?
I also wanted to thank you, Mrs. Tuttle. I did want to remind everybody that activities have already started at school. Please support our students. And I look forward to a successful 2022, 2023 year.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to also say that activities have started. I know tomorrow, tomorrow, there's a C-Team scrimmage at West Valley for football. That's pretty fun to go see, it's really great to support your community. I'm really looking forward to tomorrow, the start of school. I'm going to be showing around freshmen at North Pole High School, and I'm really excited to see them.
Ms. Maline?
Thank you, President Luke. I would like to start my comments with just some clarity on the topic of testing and Mr. Dorn's comments. The state board is required to have cut scores in place by the fall to comply with USDA requirements for the Every Student Succeeds Act. So there is a compliance requirement there for that. And secondly, there is scheduled, as was stated in the July State Board of Education meeting, there is a validity study scheduled for summer of 2023 that will revisit those cut scores and do that validity study on the assessment. And then finally, I would just like to say to Ms. Richardson, welcome. And you've probably already been told that you have big shoes to fill. But I don't know that that's accurate because you're going to have to make your own shoes and make this job fit you. So I hope in the days and weeks to come that you can find some good shoes and it's a good fit, and you can run long and hard with us. So thank you.
Thank you. And then, just in closing, I just wanted to thank the board for being here, being present, and being ready to roll up our sleeves and work this next school year. We appreciate Mrs. Tuttle and also Ms. Richardson. We really appreciate you coming in and helping set up this board for success. Good luck tomorrow. Thank you to our educators who are in the classrooms, who are in the school buildings, who are helping our students get ready. Thank you to our community, the guardians, our parents, our grandparents, whoever it might be, who are getting our students ready to come to our schools tomorrow to access their education. Thank you for what you have done this summer, and thank you for preparing them for school this fall. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.